Meeting to order. Please join me in the flags loop.
To the Republic which stands. Indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, topics from the floor. You'll be limited to five minutes each, and it's for any topic that is not on the public hearing agenda. If anybody has any, please step forward. Anybody online either?
I'm not, I'm not bringing a topic to the floor. This is David. I'm just noting that I'm attending via Zoom this evening.
Thanks, David. So Planning Commission Minutes dated December tenth, twenty twenty four. Ready a chance to read those?
Yep.
Any corrections or motion?
They looked good to me, so I would move to accept them as written.
Second.
Those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Anybody? And then the Joint Planning Commission and City Council Minutes dated December eleventh, twenty twenty four. Any corrections or motions?
Nope.
Make a motion that we accept a man's route.
I will second that.
All those in favor? Are you opposed? Discussion item Chair and Vice Chair selection.
What you've been training.
How do we know about that? Someone make some motion?
I move for you to be in chair.
Thanks. Second.
Well, I, yeah, I will. Enthusiastically support that.
I'm accepting it, so it's fine. Um, is all those in favor?
Hi.
I guess.
And then Vice Chair. I would like to nominate. Commissioner Cisco Brooke. For Vice Chair.
Second.
Second, yep.
Don't know if I get to make a motion or not, since I'm here now.
Here now, so I'll make a motion to accept Brooke as Vice Chair.
I second his motion.
Aye.
Aye.
David say aye, okay. New Chair and Vice Chair.
Me.
Thanks. Good backup. Are you willing to do that? Now six thirty-three P M. The public hearing is now open. This is a quasi judicial land use hearing. Subject of this hearing is a request for three variances. The subject property is identified on the county assessor's map as lot one hundred. On map. Four N one W dash four A A B. The applicant is Kevin and Catherine Mc Carter. Order is the same as the applicant. Because quasi judicial proceedings require the observance of certain procedural formalities, we will take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the commission wish to declare where actual conflict of interest or bias in this matter? David?
Nope, no, no conflict or bias.
Does any member of the commission wish to declare an expertise communication or site visit?
Nope.
Does anyone in the audience object to the ability of a commissioner to make a fair decision? Generally, the order of proceedings will be follows required statements, staff report, applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application. Neutral testimony, those opposed. Retaliate by applicant, final questions, close of the record, deliberations and decision. Following statements are required to be made at the commencement of the hearing pursuant to city code. And O R S one nine seven dot seven nine seven five. The following is a list of applicable substantive criteria for the decision. St. Helens Municipal Code seventeen dot one oh eight dot oh five oh. Criteria for granting a variance. All testimony. Arguments and evidence must be directed toward the applicable substantive criteria as described. Or other criteria of the comprehensive plan or land use regulation which the person believes applies to the decision. Value to raise an issue, including constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval in this hearing in person or in writing or failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to avoid the approving authority and opportunity to respond to the issue. Pursuant appeal to Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue and precludes an action for damages in the Circuit Court.
Alright, thank you. Um, so as our Chair noted, we're here tonight for three variances. And so we're on Hanky Road, three, five, seven, three, two Hanky Road, to be specific, so. If you're familiar with this, this is Hanky Road leads you to the Elk Ridge subdivision. And what the applicants requesting is a property line down the middle of two existing structures. And so all of the variances they're applying for, the three of them are related to our lot standards for partition. Um, so we've got one variance for reduced side yard. So both of the side yards are deficient between the two structures for the zoning. One variance is for reduced lot size, so this, this lot here is smaller than the lot size that would be allowed um, under the R seven zoning, seven thousand square feet. Um, and then the last variance is for a reduced lot width. Um, and that's the width of the building line, so this lot here is too narrow at the building line, and we'll talk about those in greater detail. Um, so the subject property itself is point three one acres, so here's the subject property for the existing lot. Um, and as I mentioned, this is the proposed lot line down the middle in red here. Um, so it's got a single family dwelling on it here, that's on the north lot, that's the existing house. Um, and then in twenty fifteen, they applied for a building permit to build an attached shop. Um, that's what you see here, the thirty by thirty shop. So importantly, this shop is a garage below and then living space on the second floor. Um, so it puts it at over six hundred square foot gross floor area. Um, and our code doesn't allow accessory structures over six hundred square feet. Um, and so at the time, they put this breezeway to connect the two structures, so we called it a building addition. Um, that was, that was how they allowed that. Um, this is important because we went out on site and the breezeway had been demolished, so right now we have a nonconforming situation. Um, either way this variance goes, permitting is going to be needed to get this shop um, to be converted formally into a dwelling, because we do allow two dwellings on a property, so um, there's a way to make this legal without any exceptions to the code. Um, we just need to see the proper permitting for that. So, um, also important was that, um, building permit to build the shop was, um, by the same applicant. So in twenty fifteen, they were the same owners, they, they built this shop in its location that it is today. Um, that's it for background. So as I mentioned, this property's R seven zoning. Um, so in the R seven zone, the minimum side yard is seven feet. Um, and the applicant is proposing a property line that would create a four point one foot side yard along the dwelling. So along this property line, there's fifty inches proposed or four point one feet. Um, and then a three point eight foot side yard, um, from the shop, so forty-six inches to that property line. So that's the first setback. Um, the first variance, excuse me. Um, variance number two is for reduced lot size, so the minimum lot size is seven thousand square feet for detached, single family dwellings. Um, the lot with the shop would be approximately fifty-one hundred square feet, so it would be um, about nineteen hundred square foot short of a, a minimum lot for R seven. Um, the other lot that with the existing house would be eighty-one or eighty-four thousand, and these are approximate numbers. This, this property would need a subsequent survey to kind of formalize all of these dimensions. Um, if we were to lean towards approval tonight. Um, and then the third variance is for reduced lot width. Um, so the minimum lot width at the building line in R seven is sixty feet. Um, so this one is met, it's really hard to see that. Mention here that this is sixty feet here. Um, this lot width is only forty-seven point eight, so it's about twelve feet short of the, um, minimum lot width at the building line.
Bottom lot.
Yep, the one with the shop. So as with variances, we look at our five criteria. I go through those, I think we'll talk about it a little bit more as we go through it too, so. On this one, I want to look at the aerial. So I included this, um, exhibit to kind of show the surrounding area a little bit more. So the subject property is in yellow here. Um, and you can kind of see there's a subdivision to the north. Um, and then there's some larger lots. Um, the lot lines are really hard to see on this map, but hopefully you saw on your hard copies, um, the kind of surrounding area. Um, and that's important because the first criteria talks about, um, if the variance is detrimental to the surrounding properties in the vicinity. And generally, the surrounding properties are greater than seven, um, thousand square foot lot sizes and do generally meet the seven foot side set setbacks. Um, and just for reference, the city's highest density zoning across residential requires a minimum of five feet setback, and so the applicants requesting quite a bit, that's quite a big, um, side setback, um, variance, considering our highest density is, is five feet, and we've got less than four in some cases. Um, I also wanted to point out with this, so the, the property owner also owns this large undeveloped lot to the north, so the same owner applicant. And that's important because there's an existing gravel driveway that serves that undeveloped lot. Um, you can kind of see the circular gravel driveway right here. Um, and in order to serve the applicant is proposing a shared access through that undeveloped lot that would serve the northern lot that has the house on it already. Um, so I can go back to this here. So here's the where they've labeled old driveway, they're, they're proposing some type of shared access agreement to serve a parking area that would be in the back. You know, our code requires that each lot dwelling has two non tandem paved parking spaces, so that would be a requirement as part of their partition. Um, and I just pointed out that that's, that's a really good likely location for, um, development of an access that would serve that property if it were ever developed in the future. Um, because Hanky Road is pretty steep, um, and there's a pretty big curve in the road, and so that access is the furthest away from that steep curve, so it's a good point for access. That was all I was pointing out. Um, and then I also wanted to note that with the future land division that the applicant would propose, both the access and, um, the parking would need to be paved as part of that subsequent decision.
That's an important point. We don't have a land, a land partition application at this time. That would be something they would need to apply for, and the idea is they're seeing if they can get the variances to apply to that before, um, putting the effort into the land partition.
When we get to the conditions, you'll see there's, um, quite a few conditions, and it's more just those are all the things that would need to be dressed, addressed as part of a future partition, but right now, that's not what they're applying for, they're just seeing if they can get variances that would support. Say that again. Um, so for criteria, I'm going to be, um, special and unique circumstances. Um, the Planning Commission would have to come up with a finding here. Um, I didn't really know anything from a staff perspective. The applicant built the shop. So it was, it's difficult to find special and unique circumstances. Um, that are outside of the applicant's control rather. Um, so criteria and C. Um, applicable standards are maintained to the greatest extent reasonably possible. So with this one, I just wanted to point out, um, on the photos. So when this criteria I pointed out, there's a number of structures that would cross over that proposed property line, so this retaining wall is kind of about where that property line is proposed. You can also see there's a porch that has stairs down into a landing. Um, and that would also cross into the proposed property line. So either those structures would have to be altered, or there would have to be some type of maintenance agreement between the two properties, so that if they were ever sold separately, we know who's responsible for maintenance. Um, typically, we don't like to see structures over property lines. There's another angle, this is from the back. That's something that would have to be addressed. Um, our building official also noted that this eve for the shop extends within three feet of the proposed property line, and so it would either have to be altered to reduce its size, or it would have to be reconstructed to meet fire separation requirements, so, um, you know, building officials get excited when you have structures close to property lines, and so, um, that's another thing that would have to be addressed. Um, criterion D, physical and natural systems, um, cannot be adversely affected. Um, there's existing frontage improvements that wouldn't be altered, so you can see there's sidewalk, curb and gutter. Um, there's already a, a driveway apron where that proposed shared access would be, so that's not proposed to change. Um, I did want to point out, the storm drain here, um, is directed towards the proposed property line, and when you're creating lots with super narrow narrow setbacks, you have less area to deal with stormwater, um, and the natural grade of the site, you know, you're going to have stormwater nuisance issues if that's not addressed, and so um, there might be some stormwater improvements that would be required as part of a partition. Um, and then I'm just pointing out, there's a lot of shared utilities between the two properties, so power, sewer and water would all have to have their own separate utilities as part of a partition. Um, that's pretty typical for partition applications, um, and not really part of the variance, but something worth pointing out that makes this, um, a complicated partition. Um, criterion E, uh, variance is not self imposed, and it's the minimum necessary to alleviate the hardship. Um, I just wanted to point out that the code does permit two dwellings without any exceptions, without reconfiguration of utilities, without any easements. Um, as an allowed outright use, you are allowed to have two dwellings on a property, and so, um, if these variances are granted, it's going to be a really complicated partition. And that's all I have.
Okay. Please remember that we can ask questions at this time, but cannot deliberate until after the public hearing is closed. That said, does the Commissioner have any selections of stuff?
I'm a little confused, Jenny, on the, um, it was required to have the breezeway before so that it would be considered one building. But things changed to where now two buildings are.
Yeah.
Or.
Exactly, yeah, so now we are allowed, so since twenty fifteen, we're allowed to have two dwellings on a property without.
One had to be bigger.
Um, well, you'd have to have an A D U permit at the time.
Okay.
We no longer require A D U permits.
Okay.
Um, and so a lot, allowed outright, you know, you're allowed to have two dwellings that are detached. What you aren't allowed is to have an accessory structure larger than six hundred gross floor area, which is what's currently occurring.
And what we couldn't find is a permit that officiated the shop as a dwelling. There's nothing that we could find in the building permit records to where it got to that point. It's something that we discussed with them quite a bit at the time. Um, because they had a relative that was living there. When they first built it, you know, is it going to have enough to be a dwelling unit or not? Um, but now the rules are more flexible, it's just a matter of, uh, finally the official, uh, status of the building.
Any other questions? Do the applicants have a presentation?
We're here, I don't really have much more than there, but yeah, I can answer.
The sound system works better from right under that.
Oh.
Backs up there, so. Let's see that, I'll end up talking.
Can you set, state your names for the record?
Sorry, Catherine Mc Carter.
And Mc Carter.
Um, so a couple of the, um, comments that we have is that the uh, building official did not come out and measure those eaves, and they do meet the requirements for space between the two existing buildings. There is three feet, three feet.
Um, it has to be offset by two inches, so forty-six inches on one side and fifty inches on the other side.
And the total distance between the two buildings is how much? Eight feet? So, so there is space for those eaves that they're talking about, the fire breaks on top. So, um, we wanted to comment on that. We also wanted to comment that the existing porch and the retaining wall and porch actually has two accesses on porch already in place. And so we would just simply move the stairs to the other side of the porch to remove that access. This right way. No, fine, I mean, there's, uh, on the existing house up here, right? Yeah, there's another stair or another access off the other side of the porch, so maybe just remove that and remove that top portion of the retaining wall. So that it would not encroach upon the new property line. Um, and then we had already figured we would have to put in, um, a new sewer to kind of we're already looking at those variant, like, we're not asking for those easements. We already assumed we would have to put in its own sewer line out to the street.
Right now, both buildings have their own separate water meters and you like, well, water lines and electric lines, they have separate billing totally. The only common, um, element between them is a sewer, so we knew if we want to go for, we'd have to put a new sewer in.
For the existing, uh, original house.
Yeah.
Got it?
I think so.
Oh, redirect the drains, there's that one drain in the back of the house. There's a French drain actually that was built around the shop in the garage to deal with water. So there's not water and runoff that actually goes between those two buildings.
But I could redirect, um, downspouts. The, the, uh, downspout on the front of the house is currently, uh, out, outputting big clip in the direction of the driveway. I could put that on the up further, furthest end of the house, so that it would rain out into the yard. Give it more time to get absorbed. And, uh, I could, I, there, on the back of the house, one rain, one strain is already far from the, uh, proposed property line. The second, uh, rain gutter is on that corner of the house, so, um, I could move it as far up the hill as possible and put a longer downspout on it, put it further into the grass if that would help, maybe build a berm. Whether, whatever, what other ideas there might be.
The rest of it is all very accurate, other than I, I didn't realize we had to have it as an A D, because it's a whole apartment upstairs, uh, with a nine hundred square foot apartment up above, no A D U permitting anymore. I, I don't, yeah, so, and we're kind of confused too, admittedly, about the two structures on one property and splitting the property. I do want to point out, there are a couple of lots down not far from us that actually have smaller breezeways that they're very close together and connected. I'm talking about the properties over by that employment office. That whole development in there.
Oh, D M V.
Oh, the D M V.
Yeah, that's attached housing.
Yeah, so they have those, and then there's also a lot not far from us either that has no driveway, no garage, no nothing, I don't even know what that's zoned for, but it's very small. There are the uh, by the apartments down on, uh, Columbia, yeah, by Columbia. And then there's another one, they're trying to permit not far from us either, on Pittsburgh Road, which is very small, that can't even be an R four. So, I don't know. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any testimony in support of the application? Is there anyone online, Jenny? Just David. Thanks for asking. Any neutral testimony, those who are not in favor or against the proposal?
I should have come up in favor, but, um.
Can you state your name for the record?
Al Peterson, one oh one St. Helen Street, um. I just have, have two questions, really. Um, I think it should, based on what I heard from the applicants, it seems like a no brainer to me. Um, you know, they're going to have to deal with some of the complications of it, but that's their problem. Um, but I just have two questions, and it's really mostly of staff, because I'd never heard of a dimension at the building line, usually it's how much frontage you have at the street. So, you know, I personally would just like a little clarification on that. And then secondly, the two buildings on one lot, I don't quite understand related to A D Us, because I thought it was still in the A D U thing, so it's just clarifications, and it's probably has to do with the changes that were made, but um, the frontage question, I just don't quite get, because usually it's frontage at the street. Yeah, and, and that has, they got fifty-two feet frontage, and they got fifty-four feet frontage, so I don't know, I don't get the, you know, you know, at the building line, I just don't get it.
So, um, in a lot with standards, most of the zoning specify lot width at the street and at the building line, and in some cases, uh, it can be narrower at the building line. Um, but then the remainder has to be wider. It looks longer than I've worked here, and every partition and subdivision um, reviewed in the last seventeen plus years, that's something that we have considered. And i- in this case too, so in this case, the portion that abuts the right of way is okay, but it's the, the narrowest of, the narrowness of the overall lot. And then um as far as the ADU, uh, our code allows it to be called that. Um, but there is no special permitting or restriction. For that second unit, other than all the basic things that would apply to the um first dwelling. Meaning your setbacks, your lot coverage, that kind of thing. And that was when we um had to implement Housefield two thousand one. Where cities above ten thousand in population, including St. Helens um. Uh, became obligated to allow duplexes anywhere we allowed single family dwellings. And in our discussion with the council, although the state did not mandate it, we said that that could be in the detached form.
Okay, now I get it. Okay.
And all that stuff, you know.
Know about the detached part.
Yeah, so that that was when we took, we went the extra mile to be well. And like the former mayor said, when we posed that question, why not? And nobody challenged it. So that's what we went with.
But importantly, that shop and uh living space was prior to those rules. And so at the time, there was a memo that said, as part of the building permit, conditions of approval, this is not a dwelling. Because you would have been required to get an ADU permit, which they didn't get. So now we have a not a dwelling and an existing house.
And it's and it's zoned R seven. And and back then a duplex would have required a conditional use permit. Um, and so it was this, you know, they didn't want it to be a duplex. They wanted to be an accessory structure. That's why it had the breezeway. Of course, now if they did it, the rules were a lot easier. So all the finagling that we've worked on back then, we wouldn't have to work on now. So that's just kind of the evolution of when they started, the changes in the law and where we're at today.
Right. Is there any uh testimony in opposition of the application? The applicants have a right to rebut anything that was said if you feel the need to add anything or.
Yeah, if you want to rebut Al's mostly positive comment. This is, this is kind of your last call to provide testimony if you so choose. Because in the public hearing, they'll be closed and then it's their time to talk.
Yeah, I don't know what I would provide anymore about. I mean, you pretty much covered it in there. It's. I think for us, it seems very basic for us. We're just trying to split off those two properties. And um and we're willing to um make the accommodations necessary to make each one its own whole properties. Does the commission have any final questions?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Uh, hearing no further questions from the commission and no further responses from staff, the public record is closed. And this matter is returned to the table for deliberations and oral discuss decision. All right, now's the time that we get to deliberate and vote.
So I kind of have a question, one's got a question, just a concern, I guess. If we approve the variance and then they come back and split the lots up, now we've created an aerial trespass for the power. So.
Sorry.
Aerial trespass for the power, the power to the existing house would then cross across the property of the shop. And so in that case, we would need, I mean, you're by creating an aerial trespass and the easement for that would take care of that issue. So I don't know if that's something that we can suggest or require, but it is you're crossing one property to serve another property.
And you're not approving the land division tonight.
Just kind of thinking.
Yeah, and and that was um if 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 I may, um, there are some, if we go down that route, there's some recommended conditions of approval. And it addresses that utility question. I noted that on my site, but there's power that crosses the property line and it's actually on this site plan too. You can see it. Um, this P right here.
Yeah.
So in addition to sewer, um, they would have to address that power connections. And you know, this is showing the water we're here crossing. I don't know how, if that's inaccurate or not. Um, but all of these things would have to be surveyed in anyway. Um, and that's also addressed in those conditions on page five. Staff report.
Are all three variances tied together or?
They wouldn't be able to proceed with the partition if they all three were not great.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. And just to clarify one other thing. So now that I'm chair, I'm a non. Anybody else?
We could vote if there's insufficient people for votes, but we'll deal with that. We don't have that call tonight, so.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm just working backwards through our criteria. Because I think that's probably the best way for us to do this is just to start from A and go down or E to go and go up. Um.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I'm. Sorry, I'm just wrapping my head around the the, and I I know we've been over this, around the change in terms of the um. The not an ADU. Uh, so the takeaway is that it is, it is now a perfectly legitimate option to have. Two separate residential buildings on that plot, correct?
I think the permitting just needs to catch up with what is existing on site.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, the fact that one is over, it's over six hundred feet is still an issue though, right?
Per our records right now, that is an accessory structure, not a dwelling. That's the issue.
We assume that it'll be easy though.
Yeah.
To to change over.
Where I'm stuck is on the criteria E, the hardship is not self imposed. I feel like it is self imposed.
That is a tougher one.
That is actually takes those boxes.
Because again, as as things stand now, the code just allows for both of those buildings to be there. Um, you know, and one to be used as an accessory structure or whatnot. So. I suppose the question would be what? What issue is subdividing solving that isn't self imposed?
You're, you can't, if you have two homes on the same lot, you can't sell them separately.
Got it.
So it's ownership issues.
Yeah, yeah.
I feel like C and D can be met, but I'm A, B and E are my issues.
Speak up. Sorry, I couldn't.
Reading through this, um, that was general opinion when we've all come in here. Yeah, I think some of this is, you know, these criteria. Are not met as it states. This has to be met. Or that is our guidance, then. Just one of them isn't met. It's a little ship.
Have a motion? You also have any?
Uh, I'll, I'll move to uh. Do I need to move to deny each variance or accept them separately? Or can I just say that? I feel like we're not going to come to an agreement on all three variances on A through E. So I would move to reject the application as a whole.
There are any more?
Yeah, I second.
Seem like there is so. Does that need to be based on findings in fact? Motion?
Well, we have the testimony. And sometimes, you know, we uh. Glean from that to help with the findings.
Right. Did we have a C seconded?
Yes.
Right. So it's been moved and seconded to seconded to deny these three variances. So Commissioner Sisco.
Bye.
Hi. Apologies, I'm an I also.
David?
Hi.
All right. Somebody want to move for signature?
I move. Seconded.
Bye.
David?
Hi.
So what the motion for signature is um. To facilitate us whipping up the decision, having the chair sign it. Rather than waiting before the next hearing or a meeting to put it before them.
Do we appeal? Do we go to the state? What do we do?
Uh, we we can talk about that uh offline.
Okay.
Yeah. But there, uh, you do have appeal rights. Yeah.
Yeah, I think. Thanks. So then, just to clarify for me, since I'm reading through the description the first time, or second time, so. Are the final decision making authority on that?
Yep, this is, this will be. And then it'll get mailed, I think, since it's there.
Written decision of the planning commission may be appealed to the city council. The notice of decision will be mailed to all persons who testified their comments. And the appeal deadline will be included in the notice. All right.
Excuse me.
Looks like we're on to uh planning commission interviews. A is first.
Seven ten. No, just um.
Trying to keep them around fifteen minutes?
Yeah, okay.
So if you noticed in your packet, they included some examples of questions. Hi, Jay.
Thank.
How are you?
Great. I know you have questions. Do you, if I make some introductory comments?
Like that would be great.
You, you have absolutely no idea who I am.
We'd appreciate that.
Questions may or may not address that. So I thought it'd be worthwhile.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm a whopping three year resident, St. Helens. Uh, my wife and I moved out here three years ago. Seventy three years old, parent, two kids, eight grandkids. Uh, my background and professional background has been in sales for fifty years. Latest uh episode, I was vice president of a publishing company that did eighty million dollars. I had uh forty staff underneath me. I was responsible for strategic planning, budgeting, sales. Every aspect of that. Um, my other two expertise is I've been heavily involved in the sports world. Lived uh forty five years in East County, ran Gresham Little League. Babe Ruth Legion, uh, which encompassed well fifteen hundred kids and a half a million dollar budget. In sports supplies, fields, organization, leadership. And uh also was involved with the Gresham Barlow School District for over fifteen years. Budget, curriculum and foundation boards. Uh, Gresham Barlow has eleven thousand students, is the fifth largest school district in the state. On the foundation board, we raised three million dollars for ancillary funding of the school district. But in curriculum and budget, obviously entails a lot of what you're doing, state law, balancing budgets. Uh, school districts do not have luxury of deficit spending. It's against the law. A board member is held liable. So that was a challenge in the last fifteen years. So problem solving initiatives, leadership, training is a lot of my background.
Great. Thank you for that. Um, so I'll start off. It's like, um, why now? Why are you um interested in being on the planning commission?
Uh, great question. Having lived out here three years, supplanted after forty five years in East County. And you just heard my involvement on that side. It's in my DNA to be involved. So I live on Second Street overlooking probably the biggest development this city has ever done, the waterfront project. And that spurred my interest. What is the process? What are you looking at? What are the funding? What is the uh means of getting developers involved? So uh just a deeper relationship in the community. And at seventy three years old, I'm uh gainfully unemployed and I'm uh lacking for things to do. So we'd love to be, so I would love to be involved deeper.
Right. I see. So you're just appointed to the library board as well?
Yes.
Job yet?
Yes, we, we just started. We're growing uh the acre space area. I uh uh bruised the city's resolution. I didn't know if it was uh. Allowed to be on two different boards and I saw in the resolutions it was, it's, it has to have an exception granted in the process. But I've been working deeply with Suzanne on fundraising. The library is a well oiled machine. I've been in publishing for twenty five years, so I'm a voracious reader. So it was a natural start for me in the community.
So you anticipate things continuing on?
Oh, absolutely. I would uh not want to give that up. It's a tremendous asset to this city. And she's doing a great job over there.
Um, part of the criteria for being on planning commission is that you at least have to have an interest in historic preservation. We speak to that at all?
Uh, that's a wonderful uh question. I'm uh uh in my sales uh career. I've traveled probably forty five of fifty states. And my uh lasting passion the last few years. Uh, you know, the United States has got two hundred and fifty years of history and wanting to see it. So I have family on the East Coast and we've been going through Charleston, Savannah. Uh, customers in the Boston area, uh, looking at history, old buildings, how they came to be. So it is one of my newer interest areas, architecture, planning and uh what goes into that.
Just want to jump in.
Yeah, um, so the the planning commission a couple of years ago decided it wanted to be proactive. Uh, thinking about the city of St. Helens, you're, you know, and you're here so far. Uh, what does being proactive mean to you?
Fabulous uh question. Being a sales guy, if you're not proactive, the world passes you by. Customers don't call you asking door order. You have to seek and find. Uh, buying signals include a fear from something or attraction to something. Uh, the city is positioned for growth. Uh, almost beyond any other city in a hundred mile radius of Portland. I look at Vancouver, uh, McMinville. Uh, Hood River, some of the downtown areas that have been developed and are magnets for attraction. And I think St. Helens is ripe for that. I I'll be quite frank with you. I drive down Main Street down here with the storefronts closed and non retail oriented. And I get very concerned, especially with the newer area come in. The area is robust. Uh, the uh 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 saying in real estate has always been location, location, location. How many cities are sitting on the Columbia River? How many cities are sitting on the Columbia River within thirty minutes of a metropolis area of a million and a half people? So I think the opportunity for, uh, sustained growth, smart growth, uh, needs to be pursued out here. And I think the waterfront project is the first step in that area, but there's probably other pieces of property that would lend themselves to that as well. You only have to go up the I-five corridor on the Washington side, up to Woodland in that area where the casino is. And certainly that was a driver, but there's a whole new city that's there that wasn't there ten years ago, driving a tax base, jobs, employment, et cetera, and is a draw. And I think St. Helens has that same ability.
Thank you for that, and I, I know that myself and a number of other members of the commission share those concerns about vacant storefronts and, and space usability. And so, now that, I think based on that, I've got a sense of what, what kind of issues might be particularly of interest to you. I'd like to steer us back towards, I guess, more pedestrian, but, but still important question, which is we, we deal with members of the public in this role, as you've seen. Um, sometimes our reading of the relevant statutes compels us to give answers to people that are not what they were looking for. Uh, so I'm curious how you would describe your ability representing the community in that fashion, um, dealing with disappointment, uh, dealing with potential conflicts of interest and so forth.
Uh, fabulous question. Uh, hate to default back to my background, but in sales, you get nine noes for every one yes, and your job is to find a way and solve the problem of the customer. Uh, you're dealing in a legal format here. I just heard the testimony. Proactive, great development, but may or may not need code and laws need to be adhered to. But I also think you need to be consumer-friendly, A, in how you communicate that information, and B, how, if I can be so bold in saying workarounds. Uh, our job, I think, in the city is to care for the community uh, within the guidelines of state and federal laws, but to do everything in our power to facilitate public safety, growth, economic, jobs, taxation, et cetera. So, uh, having been in my background in sports, there's things you can do and things that you can't do. And obviously, in the school district arena, there was a lot of times we dealt with parental involvement and just begged to say yes to a troubled kid. But there was guidelines that we couldn't do for the greater good of everybody else. We, uh, people like to say we live in a republic, but it's really a democracy of what's, uh, available for the greater good. So, I, I hear the question. I don't think there's a great answer, but being a problem-solving person with my background, I would go to lengths to work through situations that have disappointment attached to them. And we just heard, uh, even though the decision wasn't correct, there's an appeals process somewhere to go. There's, for me, there's always a solution. No, it's just the beginning of the discussion.
Great, thank you.
Depending on time, we got three minutes.
Yep.
I just have one thing. Um, those of us on the commission, um, myself included, are serving because we love this community. What is the thing that you love most about St. Helens?
You know, my, uh, my first wife died in twenty-eighteen, uh, from dementia. I did nine years of caregiving. And I was lucky to meet a fellow widow, schoolteacher of thirty years, and her family vacationed on Sand Island for forty-two years. And when we were dating, she took me to Sand Island and I went, wha- what is this? I've lived out in boring Damascus, Gresham, I've never seen this area, and I thought I was in Hawaii. And I thought, this is the greatest community I've never seen in my life. And as I told you, I've been in forty-five different states. And we got married and God ordained a housecoming available on, uh, South Second Street. Russ helped me with a little development of a, of an Airbnb, and we've laid down roots. And I just think this unity, uh, I'll use a negative word, reeks of history and opportunity for where we are as a city and what the future entails for it.
I don't know if this is appropriate, but do we have any questions from, from liaison? We used to be on the committee together, it's just.
They're supposed to, they're part of the interview panel of sorts.
Hold on just a sec. You guys have any questions?
I don't, it was very thorough.
Scott.
I'm wondering, asking if, uh, if you've done anything in order to, uh, prepare yourself for this interview specifically?
Being a sales guy, I'm used to being on the fly. I've read extensively the city's budget, uh, what's going on, losing a major, uh, taxpayer with the mill, and now getting new people in there. But I've read chapter and verse, the finances of the city. I haven't done any, to be quite honest, any research on planning building. Where we are, do we have a developer that area? What's going on? But, uh, my natural implicate, uh, uh, background is just to jump eat first and with an open mind to what's going on. And my background skills and history, I think, would adapt well to the commission.
You didn't do fifty push-ups to get yourself psyched out?
Yeah, no.
Can you pronounce your last name for me, so I get it correct?
Uh, great question. Ecternock. Can't tell by my, uh, blue eyes and blond hair, German.
Alright, well, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the time.
Next applicant is Joshua Walter. Hello. How are you doing today?
I'm well and yourself?
So we keep it all similar? Would you like to give us a little background on you, please?
Give a spiel, yeah. Um, I, uh, born and raised in Pine, Oregon. Rode there when I was eighteen, graduated, moved to Scappus. Uh, fell in love with, uh, a woman I met there, a youth group, and got married, moved to Portland for a couple of years, then, uh, decided that we wanted to, um, find a place that was, I, I hated La Pine when I lived there, but looking back, it's where I wanted to raise my kids. It's the town I wanna raise my kids in, right? And, uh, so we wanted to find that, and my wife grew up in Scappus, so we, we moved to Scappus and had a couple of kids. Um, got really involved in, um, a church here in town. And I kinda got involved in the community and decided to take the leap to St. Helens two years ago, and, uh, bought a place on Seventh, downtown, um, right next to the Twilight House. We had to see if that's a mistake, but, uh, anyway, the, uh, uh, like the previous, uh, I, I dive in by nature and everything we do, so, um, with the church, I dive in and, uh, I'm very involved in the youth group, um, and worship ministry there, and spend a lot of my time volunteering hours there, um, and then, uh, I started to dive into the community. And so, um, there's a couple of passion projects I have, mainly around, um, natural organic food because of, uh, history and, um, like local markets and foods and things like that, and I have a passion for agritourism. Um, and, uh, got involved with trying to bring, um, Saturday markets to town, um, weekend markets, things like that. Uh, started talking with some people involved, Aaron Salisbury, um, and got really involved in the heart of the city, getting excited about, uh, its development, where it was going. Um, and by nature, I'm, I'm a, um, I'm a dreamer with my head in the clouds, and I pretty much think that I can do anything and turn anything into a business. So for a long time, I spent dreaming of everything you drive by, and think, oh, that little abandoned place, I can do this, roll this. And so, what that does is it turns me into, then a fine planner, where I, um, analyze everything, and I got into realizing that there's codes and there's zones, and there's all these things, and so, um, I ended up, uh, getting a dream job where I can now work remote, and I spend all my day at home, um, in software engineering. I'm a software mostly, so I do a lot of software, uh, application consulting, and, um, so that allowed me to be at home, but, um, it also took my mind off of, uh, my entrepreneurship, if you will, and, uh, I love what I do. So I stay at home, I love what I do, but I also am involved with, um, a lot of people that want to do things in town. So I, I know a lot of people that wanna open businesses, that wanna do this with their yard or whatnot, and that I'm curious by nature, so I've always been curious of why things can't be done, and that led me to watching Planning Commission meetings and, um, wanting to get involved. So that's what put me here. Now, just now that I'm here, I have a remote job that allows me time to be involved. Um, I, I really like being a liaison between, um, yeah, that's why I'm here.
Alright, I see that you showed an interest on your application of, uh, three different committees, planning commission being one, so you're enthusiastic?
Yeah, I just wanna be involved anywhere. Parks and rec, parks, I love walking in the parks, and it was one of my things.
Yep, so you kinda answered the, my, uh, why? Have you attended any other meetings before, or you're just?
Zoom watcher. Um, I haven't attended any, any in-person, just schedule-wise and, and, um, the job is, is within the last year, the remote job is in the last year, so it's been able to, to allow me more time to, to learn more things locally and, and not watch them online. But my, uh, my wife is annoyed with how often I watch city council meetings and planning meetings and stuff like that.
So, um, you probably heard me mention in the last interview that, um, part of the criteria for being on Planning Commission is that you at least have an interest in historic preservation. Sounds like you might. Can you talk about that at all?
Yeah, um, so my, my mother grew up on a dairy farm at Dutch Canyon. Um, and it's always been a dream to buy the land back, but that'll never happen. I'm a dreamer, so, um, but, uh, so like preserving the town and maintaining its character is part of the amazing piece of St. Helens. And so, um, all the work that's been done downtown to maintain like the same look as all the historic rock pieces and is like, that's what makes us special. And I think that, um, you know, I, I think a good example is uh, the First Bank Building that, um, Beyond the Forest just did, how they, like, a buddy that wanted to do it, and we were talking how it had to be done right, because they should restore it to what it looked like, right? Not just turn it into some office space. And so I was so thrilled to see that they, you know, are taking the time to do it right. So, um, I think that the best way to enhance our city is to, um, build upon the character that its history has, so, um, build through that, rather than, um, just trying to make something new, you know? We are St. Helens, it, it's awesome, like, celebrate it, so.
So I'm curious, uh, I thi- I think you've, you've outlined various interests you've got in terms of, uh, why, why the Planning Commission? I'm curious, if in the future you're looking back at your time on the Planning Commission, what's, what is the, what is the one thing you would have wanted to get done, or what, what do you hope that you will accomplish by being on the Planning Commission? What, what would you want your legacy to be?
My word.
I know, it's a little, it's a little.
The only thing I could say is, um, on a small level, it would, it's simply to help people, um, like the last, I like, the few people that have come before, I watched those, and I just got enthralled with, um, being the, the process of explaining why someone can't do something, or helping someone figure out, here's an alternative, like the triplex to the duplex, like alternatives to solutions is, is like amazing, so you can like both assist someone through a dream they have. Um, not outright crush dreams, I guess sometimes you might, but, um, you know, the, I'd hope to help bridge the gap between the decision and alternatives through creative means of that, you know? Um, as far as creating a legacy, I, like, I don't have an ambition to, uh, you know, anything further, or, you know, um, I would just like to be part of a team that helps make sure that, you know, like, I'm excited about the Riverfront Project. I think it's a really cool thing. I think that community gets really anxious and, and, um, but I've been part of construction projects growing up, and I know how it goes, and there's usually really simple explanations for all of the things that people, and so like, just getting involved is answers a lot of the questions, and so I like being informed, if you will. And so, um, just simply being someone that's known to, to, to help bridge that gap and make, uh, a no seem not as a no, um, and then be able to celebrate the yeses too.
Excellent, thank you.
Love to say yes when we can.
I know. We're all ambitious at heart.
David got mine, and that was gonna be the, the legacy question that I was gonna ask.
Mine is the same. Um, you know, what do you love most about St. Helens? For me, volunteering on the commission is, you know, a love of this community, so what do you love about it?
I was just gonna say, St. Helens, I love, you know, um, there was a lot of talk of the last, uh, election about, you know, welcoming outsiders and whatnot, and I'm technically an outsider, but I've been here twenty years, but like, like, we all love the community, and we all like have our own experiences, and, and, um, those that like dive in and help and have an honest, like, passion for the community are just amazing people. That's why, like, I wanted to raise my kids here, 'cause, like, I haven't found people like this, other than when I grew up in the nineties, and that's hard now, right? Like, it's hard to find that community, and so, um, being able, uh, trying to help protect that, you know, protect that small-town feel. But I agree, we have a potential to grow exponentially, and I think, um, wise counsel and consideration to go into that, and, and I'm interested in being part of that, um, and having an opportunity, so.
Thank you.
Are there any issues that you've watched these meetings and all that? Are there any issues to you that stand out that you expound upon?
Issues that I could see?
Yes, well, not just you, but, I mean, that have been raised during these meetings.
Um, no, I just thought it was funny, like, was the time, um, I was telling my dad, walking this meeting, I tend to fall on the side of, uh, like, it's your land, you do what you want to, right? And then someone can, like, then you hear the explanations of why, and so then I like to bounce back and forth and, and, uh, I don't know if I'd like, uh, see any problems that I like, but, uh, any issues I might see is sometimes I might lean more towards, it's your land, you do what you want to, but that might be a good balance, but, uh, um, that's my only issue, that's what you mean.
You have any questions for us?
Um, I mean, there's tons, but, uh, I, I think, no, I, I was answered, I, I almost backed out, 'cause I was like, I was watching things beforehand and, and it's, uh, I don't know zoning and a lot of the stuff, and I was just like, this is too much for me, and I'll watch and I'll learn more, but, um, no, it's, it's just, uh, I think I'm, I just like to be involved, yeah.
Giant book.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, the, the good news is, you'll, you'll be provided with all the zoning information you possibly want. Probably more.
Yeah. So, on your availability, um, so we meet once a month. We also have a quarterly joint meeting with the city council. And, uh, we also, since we can no longer meet in subcommittees for, to be proactive, we may have to do some research on our own and bring it back to the council, to the commission. So you have that availability?
Yeah, like I said, I work remote, and, um, it's a dream job, I've been blessed by it, and so I really have availability. We work four days a week, so I have Fridays through, weekends off, so I have a lot of free time on Fridays to do things. Um, and then, like I said, I can, uh, usually plan around meetings, um, with my clients and the way I work, and, um, I have a lot of flexibility with time, so that's one of the reasons I thought it'd be a good time to be part of that.
Liaison council members, have any questions?
Thanks.
Hello. Let me just start with an introduction.
Yeah, go ahead and do it.
My name's Trina Kingsbury. Um, I've lived in St. Helens for, uh, eight years now. I grew up in this rural, moved to Scappus, lived there a couple of years, fell in love with the area. Um, and then when it was time to buy, my husband and I settled in St. Helens. Um, I've worked in supply chain for my entire career. Um, I'm in between jobs right now, so this kinda felt like a good time to really get involved and get hit the ground running, 'cause I have extra time to commit to a, a commission like this. As far as my interest in St. Helens, I, I love this community. I love the river, I love. The history that it has and the the opportunity for growth too.
You live on the east side of the highway?
I live on the other side. I'm I'm by McBride.
Find that interesting because.
I frequent downtown. I love the be able to walk on the river and we have a boat, so we're out on the on the waterfront as well.
I'm on that side.
Well, we thought we talked about in the past how it'd be nice to get a cross section of.
All over the city, yeah.
Other side of the tracks.
So um why do you have an interest now in planning commission?
Uh you know, once I moved here, I realized I wanted to eventually get involved. So right now, being unemployed, I figured. I've got some time, let's let's get involved. Um but I also, I've get got to know the community a bit more over that time.
You feel like when you're employed again, that you will have the time, like I've stated that we.
Yep, so when I when I started my career, I was actually a full-time student and full-time employee. So I was able to manage both of those commitments and I think I'd be able to manage both of that um going forward. And in all my previous roles, I've been able to leave early as needed for first things. So the once a month, I don't see any issue making it here. Um and then having time to review material ahead of time as well.
We usually receive our packets the week before, so we have the weekend to look over, which is really important and helpful. Um so you heard me ask too about um historic preservation, that you need to have at least an interest in that?
Yep, ab- absolutely. I love um I've done a couple of the walking tours around Saint Helens. I still haven't made it into the museum for some odd reason. But um I love learning about the history of this place. It tells a story and our buildings are a part of that story. And it shows the art and culture of times, pastimes, and and you can learn from that history as well, so.
David, you wanna go next?
Yeah, thank you. Um so. Is there, uh yeah, I've realized that we asked the same questions, so my apologies if you're like, oh man. Sounds like this was already asked other people, but I'm genuinely curi- curious about everyone's answer. Are there particular? Functions of the planning committee that you're you're particularly interested in or or is? What would you like to be able to get done as a part of being on the planning committee?
Uh I I think there's a lot of opportunity um in Saint Helens to continue to grow. And that also needs to be managed responsibly. Uh we need to think about the decisions we make now, how that's gonna impact us in the future. So um it's part of just just thinking through what we're looking at, allowing people to do what they want with their property within reason. But also thinking about the future, how does this impact us now and? Does it work for for the future as well?
Thank you.
Again, my first question to. Actor knock, Mr. Actor knock, was uh how did you prepare for or if you did anything specific for?
I've seen a few of the 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 planning meetings before over Zoom or or YouTube. Um I did attend one. Pre-COVID, um when we were talking about Sand Island um campground, that was something that was of interest to me of. What are we doing here? Like, what is the plan for this? And um I know that was something that, being a boater, that would impact me of. How we access the the island and and the community still having access to that island, which was an important aspect. Um I also read through the minutes, it's uh from the last meeting and it's, there's a lot of. Comparing of laws and and codes and the end use of of a project. So I I did want to familiarize myself with some of the um decisions that the commission was working on.
The the commission is made up of all of us that really didn't know each other beforehand coming in. And we all bring something different to the commission. What is it that you think you bring that would help strengthen the commission?
Well, well, it sounds like I live on the different side of the tracks than.
Known for that now.
Um I also, I I think I'm a little bit younger than a lot of the commission as well. I think it's important to have those generational voices. Um a diverse response um helps with with making sound decisions. Um you're getting a little bit more input from.
I think that's a good thing. It is a bad thing that I like to see.
I resemble that reward.
I mean, about the other side of the try, it's a good thing that we have a cross section of the population. Okay.
Um so have you had experience dealing with or um been around like conflicts, things like that? Whether it's external, internal? How do you handle that?
Um I've worked in supply chain, so I've I've been working with suppliers quite often. Um I've also worked in somewhat sales position, so you are dealing with different people, different environments. And um you're not always looking for the exact same solution. So dealing with those conflicts, it's where can we meet in the middle? Um how how can we make this work? Um I think with the commission though, it's it's very much a yes, no, where you're not necessarily working through all those challenges. But I think it's important to discuss those and say, um hey, we can't do this because of this reason. And make it very clear on on what path somebody else could take, um kind of giving those creative solutions. To the people to, I think, revise their plans, um if it be.
Get yelled at by people sometimes.
Yeah.
The supply chain during COVID?
So I I worked in steel manufacturing, so not only was that hit during COVID um in the supply chain, but also every election year. There's another round of layoffs, so.
Yeah, it's good to see. I imagine that's been an exciting area to work in in the last few years. And you can put exciting in italics as you like.
I I I lost a job and started a new job in twenty twenty, so it's it was definitely an interesting time.
Well, I feel like you answered my question about what you love about Saint Helens and then my other one was kind of the conflict, so I feel I feel good. I feel like everything. Does anybody have any more questions for Trina?
I'll ask the same question. Do you have any questions for us?
Um how much time do you guys spend on on reviewing stuff? I think that's kind of setting expectations there.
Sometimes the packet is two small hearings and sometimes it's we've, I mean, when I first started, I think we had one that we went over midnight. With the hearings, the preparation was pretty deep, but um. Nothing that's unreasonable, you can generally review it in a couple hours.
I I know I went through the last minutes, I was just wondering if that was a typical meeting or.
We haven't had any long ones in a while.
Four hour meeting in December.
Other than the meetings themselves, it's uh. It's, I don't know. Several hours a month and that's about it. I mean, that's and that's probably pushing it a little bit.
And I I would add that uh. The the amount of time, your ability to review the packets ahead of time gets faster as you go. There is a, there is a learning curve and. Your first meeting or two, um it's just sort of getting getting used to the code and getting used to the format. And after that, it it goes. I found much more smoothly. And I I think that's fair to say.
Did actually find the whole minutes very interesting, so that wasn't a difficult read.
Here's uh my opinion, that not necessarily anybody wants on that, but I think for a long time. Commissions got watered down cuz they didn't have a lot of volunteers stepping up. So like, no, no, no. That's what ours and and then a lot of things didn't get done. Hopefully. With the the new commission that we're looking at, um we'll be able to. Accomplish some of our proactive items, which may take some time. I said in the last one that we're not allowed to have subcommittees anymore, so we would have to do research on our own and then bring it back to the commission, so. Might be some of that, but generally, I think it works out that you pick something that you're passionate about, so that you enjoy it anyway, so.
And quarterly, there are um. Right, city council and planning commission meetings, um which I have um. Mostly been reminded by my phone while the meeting was starting and I was still at work, so those are always something that you have to plan for and make sure you're on your calendar.
But you notice they changed to six o'clock this time before they started at.
It was amazing. I can. They used to be at four, so if that doesn't.
A joint meeting.
About it today.
Oh, good.
Yeah, that was a, that was.
On the agenda.
Okay, good. Change this meeting instead of starting at six, we're starting at six thirty now because people, they're still employed, gives us time to get here.
And the joint city council and planning commission meetings are are key because it gives us, you know, opportunity to interact with our city council. Um and to and the public is there as well. And and so those are really productive meetings.
It's been good.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I guess.
I would say. Yes, maybe we do L's first and then we deliberate on them.
Yeah, I think that's.
I would support that.
Okay. So this next item, um this is architecture review. This is for a building that's not an official historic um resource. So it's not. In a a store resource review where it is your actual decision, you're providing a recommendation to staff on this. And this is a building um. Close to Al's office, just a little up Saint Helen Street from there, a familiar one to you when we look at the photos. Like there's a floor plan in there and what you can see is they're proposing to converge. This uh multi-suite office. Building. Kind of a mini mart um business. And they wanna put in coolers and stuff. Which are along the walls with the windows. And so we got these plans showing the windows being blocked out. It's an architectural change. The windows proposed to be covered are not along Saint Helen Street. It all hides and the back. Apparently, the code. Not too excited about that kind of thing, but we're not talking about the front. And so, you know, it's kind of this discussion of, alright, well, how much does the side matter and how much does the back matter? Now, it's interesting on on the side of questions, the abutting properties developed at the single family dwelling. It's possible that someday, could be two years, could be thirty years, um someone wants to build a zero lot line building. Which would obscure those windows. And, you know, they could be sacrificed by by adjacent construction, but they're visible now and, you know, the house could be there for decades too. And so it's kind of, it kind of depends on on how you look at that. My my main comment was it seems like the ones in the back might be a little more important. Um and those. It could be argued that there is a a higher desire to preserve those. Um and, you know, thinking about how Halloween Town and stuff like that has evolved. You know, there's a certain character of the downtown and just in the interviews, we talked about. It's pretty universal, you know, there's something special about the downtown. And and when we think about the downtown and all the features, you know, there's the the gross features. You know, just the buildings, but then there's the totality of everything. And that's when you get into to the minutia of the features. And over time, do we preserve them or lose them and which ones should be preserved? And that's kind of the, really the question of the standards and why, at least in in. Viewing it and helping you think about it, um you know, the ones in the back. As viewed from the uh public parking area, it does provide, you know, its own little portion of character. Um and so. Will the windows be functional or not? They need, you know, based on these plans, they wouldn't be, but is there still that character from the outside?
I have just.
In excess, that's probably good enough for now on my spiel.
The window's gonna remain, you're just covering them up, so if somebody in the future wanted to.
That's what I put in. I think I put it in an email, I can't remember.
Yeah, you did. And I and I put it in the memo.
Yeah, I see they're covered with fiber cement, but it was gonna be underneath it.
No, the answer is yes. Um. Before I begin. You've asked the question about historic preservation to all the applicants. I'm an architect. I have a degree from the University of Houston. I have a master's degree in architecture. Part of that bachelor's degree was also a certificate of historic preservation. I am very familiar with the historic preservation guidelines published by the. Uh National Trust for Historic Preservation. Um it was pretty much required reading and we had to defend any projects that we did during our degree program. Based on that. So I'm familiar with the National Trust for Historic Preservation Guidelines. But to answer your question, um the building, uh as uh Jacob pointed out. The owner who now owns the building plans on making a little mini mart. I'm sorry to the commissioner who is not in rooms, but um. Uh that's the way it is.
No problem.
That won't work on the TV.
Won't work on the TV.
No, just it's.
Jeez.
It's not.
Technology, I know, that was.
Anyway, it's gonna be, you know, central, central shelves here. Basically coolers along this wall. The windows will not be accessible from the inside at all. Um the intent is to block in the windows, one, two, three, four, five, uh scroll down a little bit. Six, seven, um if you go, you've seen it in your packet. The intent, I have not had this discussion with the building code official and we made the bait on that, but basically, we're gonna use fire treated. Fire treated lumber uh covered up with fire treated plywood and then covered over that. With uh fiber cement. So everything is either fire treated and non-combustible. Um all the windows that are along the west side, which is that side. Uh face the side yard of the building, uh which currently has a. In the inside yard, currently there is grumbling. Essentially, we're covering these windows to avoid vandalism, breaking of the windows. Um the people inside this store may not know that the windows get broken in the future because they have no access to them. And there's a fence in front of the, so it's it's to, you know, prevent vandalism. To prevent uh deterioration, potential deterioration of the windows that do exist. The intent is, as you said, and as uh Jacob pointed out, cover them over. If somebody in the future does decide they want to, maybe they buy the property next door and there is no longer this party wall. Question and fire ratings of walls and all the other stuff, maybe they will open them back up and they can be used and they can. They can still be rem- the historic windows will still be there. That's kind of my point. Uh so um that's basically the intent. Now. The front facade, uh they're not planning at this moment to do anything on the front. It's actually convenient that the one, two, three westerly windows are actually frosted. So where they're gonna, where they're going to be putting the cooler in front of the three frosted windows, it really won't affect anything on the outside. You'll just see frosted windows and all the other, all the rest of the windows are clear. So it'll allow natural light into the building, but um that's basically it in a nutshell. Now, um. I I wanna thank Jacob for getting this on the uh agenda because it was a late um submittal. Um the two things that um were in the memo, which. At first, when I read it, I'm like, what? I just made a copy for you all of the actual. Um documentation from the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Which is the description of the building from the original nineteen eighty four, I think, application. Um, which describes the building, so. But the only reason I mentioned that is because I was a little bit confused, because a couple of paragraphs or the two paragraphs prior to that, it talks about the national register and then. The quote, the citation. Uh, section two point three that he's quoting, uh, at first I thought it was from the national register, but it's not. It's actually from the architectural guidelines, which I also have a copy for you. The section where those quotes were taken. This is the St. Helen's. Oh, you don't want me to say this, the oldie townie. It's kind of an inside joke, but. Um, yeah, anyway, so these are the historic guidelines, um. And I wanna point out. That what it says in the historic guidelines in top. Title of the chapter. Is facade and entry. And so the chapter discusses the facade. And entry, and then it goes down and it goes through. You know. The rules and Jacob has quoted these now. The thing that I wanted to point out is. This. I don't have Blacks Legal Law definition of facade. But in most cases. The definition of a facade is the front. Elevation. Meaning the front section of the building. Sometimes on historic buildings, when you have a monument, which is kind of in the center. Of a property. Then you can consider. All facades are important, but in historic districts, normally. What you're talking about is the street facade. Because what they're interested in is. Keeping the character of the street, keeping the character maybe of the plaza, keeping the character of what people experience. Now, the side yard. Is not the important facade, it is the street facade. And um, the various definitions that I've provided you. Pretty much point that out. Um, and I can pick. Any one of those definitions and most of those definitions talk about either street facade. The facade that's facing a public street or a public plaza. Or sometimes when you have a larger building, you're talking about a larger building and then the facades that face the courtyard. So in this case, what we have is a. A side wall. And a rear wall. And what we're doing or what we're gonna attempt to do, hopefully the building code official will agree, is to cover the windows. That are not gonna be accessible from the inside. Protect them from vandalism. And lastly, cover them in such a way that maybe in the future, somebody might wanna uncover them. And restore what was. In the past. Um, so that is in a nutshell, um. What we're asking for.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I do, so when you talk about the um. Fiber cement, uh, will you be painting everything to match, like, well, it'd be just solid, you won't be able to see big squares and.
No, you will see big squares, because simply the original um concrete, this building was built in nineteen forty, it's exactly the same. Actually, if you look at the floor plan. If you look at the floor, go to the floor plan, please. Good floor plan. So what is not, and the email I sent you shows some property line, but the property line is here. And it goes to about there and then goes all the way across there, and the property line is right there. My office is right there. So this is a party hall. And in reality, my, the building in which I occupy used to have. The same exact thing here and here, right there and right there. Because the building I occupy was built in nineteen twenty seven. So it was common practice. Back then, and it's. I won't say it's common practice, but what has happened is building code has basically. Said, look, if you're building on a property line, you have to have a two-hour firewall, so pretty much a two-hour firewall up until. I would say the last fifteen years, you could not get a window that would meet a two-hour fire rate. Nowadays, you can, if you wanna spend a lot of money on a on a piece of glass, it's about that thick. You can get a two-hour fire-rated window. But back in the day, you couldn't, so what happened is the building code basically. Dictated that if you have a lot line. Wall, you had to, it had to be solid. But what what was standard practice back in the day and there's. I used to live in Philadelphia and I dealt with historic buildings in Philadelphia. All over Philadelphia, there are buildings essentially like this. They built the building on the property, on the property line. There were no other buildings next door, so they went ahead and and put in windows and they knew. That in the future, if somebody wanted to cover up those windows, because they built a building, that was the risk they were taking. In fact, there are some buildings in New York right now where they built a new high-rise. And where the new high-rise is, there's down here an existing building, but the wall's on a property line. And they still allow the windows to face out. But. They know that if somebody else decides to build a high-rise right next to them, they will lose those windows. So it used to be common practice and sometimes in some cities around the country, it's still allowed. But usually the building code dictates that you have to have a solid wall.
I guess my question was. Will it be painted?
Oh, sorry, no, because essentially. The the wall is a is a board form coming free.
Yes.
So you have kind of a rough concrete wall and fiber cement is more or less a smooth, it's not. Perfectly smooth, I would say it's, you can get it in two textures, you can get it in what they call smooth. Then you can call, also get it in a texture which which they call stucco. And it's a little bit bumpier, but it's gonna be a different texture than. The the rough concrete.
Yeah, which I assume, I just wondered if they, yeah, we're gonna be.
And the intent is, the intent is to paint it the same color.
Thank you.
I I have a question, uh, so. Is the the position of the the mini mart owner to be uh that uh. This is a project that can't move forward unless all the windows are covered or. Uh, just anticipating that we may have to some discussion of different faces of the building. Uh, you know, is it a possibility to move forward with, you know, like. One of the faces having windows covered and another not?
I'm, I. I can't.
You may not be in a position.
I'm not building owner, all I can do is present. The plan, the floor plan that the building owner asked me to put together as his architect.
I appreciate that and I I realized as I was saying it that you were probably not the right person to ask, thank you for your tolerance.
Oh, I'm just curious on your thoughts on um section nine of the guidelines. Specifically pertaining to windows.
Right, um, that's still the same thing, um. If you look, I mean, you took this out of the section. That talks about. Entry and facade. Yeah, you know, so my point is. The windows in most historic districts, when you're talking about the story, you're talking about the streetscape. We're not talking about the rear window that faces a parking lot. And it faces the backside of two Cs, faces the backside of. Um. The Masonic building faces the backside of. Um. Scandalous hair design and the backside of uh Bemis printing and the backside of the Calibur building.
That that section, um, it doesn't seem to necessarily focus on the sods or anything. And so that's, that's why I ask.
Okay. I go back to what uh Jennifer asked is your. And and I've seen this also when I was working in Philadelphia, when I was working in Philadelphia. My first project was to go into North Philadelphia and measure a whole bunch of buildings which were being redeveloped into housing. Well, to protect the buildings from vandalism. They covered up what was behind a coverboard. Then later on, when they, when the housing authority got, you know, us involved and had the money to do the project, they. Took off those and those buildings that could be saved. Had their historic windows there, they had not been, well, some of them had been damaged before they covered them up, but. Essentially, you're covering up the windows, I get this. I've read, in fact, I almost brought it with me, I have the latest. I have the latest edition of the National Standards for Historic Preservation. Required reading, that was twenty seventeen, when I was in school, the. Two hundred, uh, nineteen ninety-seven edition was the required reading at the time and the language is very similar to what you see on this thing. If you read this document, if you go through it. And you read what it says, what it says is they're essentially assuming that you're undertaking. A restoration project. So this language is talking about when you're ready to go to a restoration project, they're recommending that you don't cover up a window. It's not talking about. Covering up a window because nothing is happening there, or you're trying to save the window for the future. So that maybe in the future, you got the historic fabric of the building. That someone might to want to restore in the future, and I can give you a great example of that. In nineteen ninety, I don't know the exact year. They remodeled the historic courtroom in the in the historic courthouse right here. At that time, Judge Calibur was in charge of the restoration and in charge of the remodel. Judge Calibur told me at the time, well, we decided to go ahead and cover up. All of the historic flooring with whatever flooring they were using. And, you know, if if they wanna restore it in the future, it will be there, so they know what was there. So that's kind of the intent. All over the east coast of the United States, you will find buildings that. Those openings have been covered, those openings have not been covered because they're doing a historic preservation project. They're trying to just simply preserve the building so that when somebody has the funding or the wherewithal. To do a historic preservation, the fabric of the building is there. Any more questions?
I I just keep in mind that. I read excerpts of the. Standards. But one of the key elements is first do no harm. And so I like that he's covering up the windows, not taking them out, so that if, like he says, somebody else could. Come in and put them back someday if they wanted to, so. I don't have an issue with it, and I think that many marts kind of high-risk. Business of being broken into and those windows are perfectly positioned, you don't have to crawl up to it.
Stand right in front of it.
Stand in front of the window and break in, so. I don't have any issues.
Kind of hidden area too.
Yeah, so I don't have any issue with.
In my business, it was uh, if the client wanted to, you had the option of preservation in situ. And this is what this is.
Yeah, similarly, I I appreciate the. Planning that goes into preserving the underlying character and making it easy for people in the future to do. Uh, you know, more involved preservation work. Um, I actually was going to have a question about the meaning of facade in the. Um, architectural standards, uh, architectural design document, um. I'm I'm not. I think there is a case that it does largely refer to, uh, sort of front-facing or public-facing areas. Um, which I think wouldn't apply to these windows that are facing, you know, the back of this house's yard. Uh, I I suppose if anyone on the on the commission, if any of my fellow commissioners wants to. Talk about these windows facing the back of two Cs and company, um. Yeah, I I I I'd entertain that conversation, um. But I I think this is a fine plan.
Yeah, like I said, my concern was that they'd not look like boarded up windows, in fact, that it looks solid and nice.
This is just a discussion item, do we need any kind of motion or?
Well, it's recommendation to staff. So, yeah, that would be a motion. And, you know, if if it's, you're okay with it as opposed. Easy as motion. If you're so inclined, or any modification?
Any modification?
Uh, the one thing I would like to see is that, uh. Any. Any attachments or any covering of it is reversible. Just to make sure, you know, it doesn't impact fabric, as you say. Uh, of what is existing. And, uh, you know, try to preserve it as it. In its status, it's currently.
Would make a motion to that effect?
As I just said, I'll make a movement. Move for that then, if anybody else has anything.
I couldn't really hear what you said, part of my hearing, my right.
I apologize, um. I'm just trying to make sure that anything that that it's being covered up, that it is reversible. Doesn't it, and it doesn't impact the fabric of the building.
I I would second that motion. Or that, the motion with that proviso?
Been moved and seconded?
Can I make one comment? Difficulty here um is. Getting an exception from the building code. And, uh. I haven't had that discussion with the building code official yet. I think what I've posed is a reasonable solution. Uh, it just depends on how strict someone wants to define a two-hour wall. And trying to construct a two-hour wall with. Because essentially on the outside, I have like three and a half inches. And if I, without getting into the details, I might not have enough dimension. In order to construct that three-hour wall without removing that window. So I just wanna point it out and I want. The historic commission to clearly emphasize, we want us to maintain. That historic fabric, like you said, so I would like the motion to include to keep. The steel windows in the wall.
I think we've.
I think that's the interpretation that reversible means the windows remain intact. I think that's a.
That the reason for your stop work.
Huh?
That the reason for the stop work?
No. I can tell you, I can tell you, the the plaster ceiling is supported by the interior partitions. But not the roof. So the roof is completely independent, they could have ripped out all the walls, but. When you look at the walls, it looks like they're load-bearing. Well, it's because they're supporting a heavy plaster ceiling.
The remodel. Been moved and seconded?
Um, I. Um, I.
I. I.
And I'll move for any signature thing is.
No signature.
No signature.
Damn it.
Ready, man. It's you're slightly more ahead on this one now.
I would love to see you encourage the. Building owner or whoever to take photographs of the existing windows and. Get into the. Um, museum, if you wouldn't mind, so we can.
Oh, okay, sure.
That'd be great.
And it doesn't have anything to do with the windows, but just out of curiosity, are they planning on painting the front facade?
I have not talked to the owner about that.
Okay, just curious. That awning. Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
It would be very, it would be so beautiful.
Buildings in St. Helens with that particular design.
The awning design or?
No, not the awning, the facade. Basic. Style. And I'll give anybody a quarter if they can figure out what the other one is.
Look at it again.
Got a quarter on the line here.
Yeah, a cold quarter.
You only have the picture again.
Great question. Yeah, you have to tell us now, then you have to tell us.
Is it the Midway Electric? That's what I was. And I can't accept the quarter because I'm a public employee.
There's one wrong.
It is. I thought it kind of looked like it, I.
Yeah, it's it's basically, you know, sort of late art deco. The Midway Electric building was built in the thirties and this was.
Is that the one that?
Nineteen forty.
Nineteen forty according to the second.
They were both built around the same time period.
That Midway Electric is a cool building.
That needs to be restored.
Agreed.
I would love to see the slide off to see if there's actually.
That there are two.
Right.
We take a party.
Yes. Yes, please.
Going to take a quick restroom break.
Yeah, it's the.
We're good.
Yeah, I think uh. Ross probably knows it's time to come back.
I have one question that's. Looking at these applications, do we check their references? Do we call them or do we? We ask for free references? But do we ever do anything with those?
You know, I don't think um.
I know they never checked mine.
There's something you're trying to tell us.
Hasn't, I don't recall it. Um, being a focus, it doesn't mean we can't.
Yeah, I'm just curious that. I think we see them on there and. Right. I'm gonna go ahead. So let's talk about first applicant.
Can we, first off, uh. Do we consider all three applicants viable?
Well, that's his job. Isn't it according to the, is it the council leads on, I don't know.
I don't think there's any reason to.
Um, I did have issue with that means that Jay is also on the.
That's what I'm saying. I think that eliminates.
Oh.
That aspect.
I don't like them from other commissions. We just, I mean, it.
Well, am I correct in recalling this?
Very smart and.
I thought he was a fantastic interview. My only comment is that. In the past, we worked with really big personalities and it was more distraction than.
That, and I've seen that too. That is extremely important that we all work together and it's not. This inner turmoil where nothing gets accomplished.
Yeah, I mean, he's clearly a sharp guy.
Yeah.
But you have somebody to come in with a big personality, sometimes it's problematic.
So I've got two quick questions um. Am I correct in in understanding that we're currently only looking at one opening?
Yes, that's correct.
And in terms of the service on multiple. Commissions. Dredging my memory here, but uh, doesn't that require some sort of. Waiver or extenuating circumstance notation, or am I just making that up?
No, it's correct, and I'll I'll read it uh just so everybody is aware. So uh, this is in the um. Or commission resolution. Rules created back in two thousand thirteen. And um, the last rule, so to speak. Individuals individuals appointed to one city board committee or commission shall not serve on any other city board committee or commission during the term of their appointment. Provided, the council may waive this limitation if it is in the public interest to do so. And so in the past, when we've had this situation, which we've had recently. You know, we we talk about it here, we talk about it with our council. And then that way the council can consider that for appointment. So there is, there is that that waiver in there, but yes, uh, David, it does take. Uh, special consideration.
Thank you.
Well, and with Commissioner Herman, though, we had one applicant.
Yep.
So now we have choices, two other people that aren't on another commission.
Um, yeah. Um. I've, I guess for me, I was kind of looking for a specific. Thing that I really felt. Was, are we going to go through each one, or do you want just our opinion on the whole thing like?
I think it might be easier just to talk about them all, kind of, but.
So for me, I was looking for that person who was more interested in. What they could do to help rather than what it makes them look like. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Not to say anything bad about any of the applicants, because I really thought that they were all great. Um, but for me, the person who. And you know, of course, you could tell by my question, what do you love most about St. Helens? The person to me that really. Loves the community and loved St. Helens was Trina. I really got a really good vibe from her.
I um actually would agree with you. I thought her application was the most complete. He looked at, she gave us a great statement under additional information. She was the only one that did that. Um, it also seemed like she, I love the, as you compare to the. Interview, I love that question, and I thought she was a standout there and like the fact that she doesn't also live downtown.
Um, yeah, when she said that the um, the city, um, the arts and the culture and the history of the city, the city tells a story, and I thought that's, you know, that's. Which I think you have to have. To be on this commission and and want to really make a difference, you know, so. And she was funny. That's not a requirement.
Sponsored question about anything conflict.
Yeah.
Watching management. My god, they.
Must be a hard job.
Yeah. Joshua, he also was impactful, his. The interview too. Uh, with uh, you know, with the first candidate, J. I think there's a conflict for that myself. Just because of that. Even though I'm on two com- commissions, you know, and it seems. Hip- hypocritical, it might be of me, but at the time when I was appointed here, there was no other candidates available. And you have been had a uh, been a vacancy for. But we have viable candidates, and he's on library. And if that was the case, I would never have applied for landing then.
Any timing on that?
That's absolutely.
Always civic involvement. Like if we've got somebody on one. I don't want to see it spread around. As many people as involved as possible. At whatever level that is, and so uh, take that for what it's worth. It's your decision to make, but that's that's how I look at it.
I feel the same way. I thought he was ideal for the library board being in publishing and.
Yeah, that's a.
It's a good fit.
Great fit. So for Jay.
From a, from a system standpoint, that I don't know whether if we've got someone who.
David.
Sorry, go ahead.
Was talking, just hold on just a second.
I apologize.
Um, yeah, he came to me uh. Quite a while ago and asked what he could do for the city and um, he said he'd like to get on planning and I said, well, there's nothing available. Library. It's a chart for him. So he did get on and he's, he's great there. As far as your selection goes, I think. I think that's really important uh. And then I'm sort of the guy that. He likes. You know, to help people and all that. I like the business guy that can look at these situations too. But I did that before and recommended someone to the uh, planning commission and um, I was rudely awakened by that down the road. Uh, so. And so anyway, um. I think you guys have done a great job and. Talking this over.
My only reservation is with the. Uh, Joshua and Trina was, they seem to be lacking a little bit on the civic activities. Uh, what they've, I don't see anything for Joshua and. With Trina, you know, they were just, you know, one day, looks like. Would like to see more. More involvement.
David, what was your input?
So I was just going to say from a sort of procedural standpoint. I, if we have someone who people feel are qualified for multiple commissions. I don't know if the proper way to handle that is to give them the choice between which one they want, or to have it be the first one they get accepted to. Or have the commissions duke it out. That may be a question that it's good for the city to take up the next time we review that part of our code. Uh, but my my pick of the three. I'm leaning towards Trina anyway, which which makes that sort of a. Non-issue for me at this moment.
Is there an opening on Parks and Trails?
There is.
Because I felt like, I mean, I like Josh too, but all, you know, a lot of what he was talking about, I thought fit more with that.
Yeah.
He would be good without him.
He signed up for all three, right?
Yeah.
Number two, number two is Parks and Trails.
Yeah.
I don't want to go there because of, there's a conflict for me then.
Is everybody in agreement with Trina being the?
I am.
Works for me.
I like the diversity that she brings to the. Conversation and everything else and. Living on the other side of the tracks.
Well, and she um.
She's in my neighborhood. You guys talk enough.
West people.
It's all from the west side.
She, I thought she prepared well. She said she. Watched meetings um before and she has done some volunteer stuff here, so.
Good problem now. Here's my second pick, so.
What's your first?
Oh, Jay.
Yeah. How about you?
I was kind of, I was hoping we had two spaces available, because I like Jay and Trina. And I did kind of dislike Josh, but it was just. Of the three, I thought those two were really kind of stand out. I agree, I think. If we don't need to have somebody that's on another commission, I'd rather go with Trina.
My, I'd land it on first, then trans second. But it was very close. I have no clause.
David, what's your choice?
My choice would be Trina.
Yeah, we we um, city recorder is always making sure they get a motion.
Okay.
For the recommendation, so we.
I move that uh, we. Recommend appointment. Of Trina. In the city council. Trina Kingsbury.
Second.
Second.
Either way. I.
Yeah, I, I.
David, he can't.
I, I'm sorry, I thought my second counted as an I. Yes, I.
All right. That all we need on that?
That's all we need, thank you.
I think he'll be a good fit. And I think it's a fantastic idea to recommend. Joshua maybe considers this.
For that. Really made me think. He should be.
All right. What do we have here? A. You got twenty twenty four year end summary report.
Such a numbers. And uh, we were at a hundred, which is. I don't know, in the middle, in the middle of the last. That seven, eight years, eight years, I think.
Seven, I think. Nine, there you go.
Fighting thing, numbers.
That's it. Did anybody have any questions when they reviewed it in their packet?
Saying a little concerned about the removal, removal permits. Haven't had one for, for years.
Yeah, like tree forgiveness permits.
You know, honestly, if, if there's a tree problem in a wetland. And if it seems like it's enough of a hazard, usually I'll just give them a written, okay? It's kind of a judgment call, but I try to.
The code is written so that it exempts trees from the need for a permit if it's a hazard.
If it's, it's if it's an immediate hazard.
Been a hazard in front of my. Across the street from me.
Is it a street tree?
Uh, well, no, it's set back by the.
And, and, and that permit is specific to trees in wetlands or riparian areas, not just trees anywhere.
Make a big deal of it.
Which is, you know. Just so you all understand what that is. That would be uh. Insane.
Appeals was interesting to me that we had ten appeals in twenty twenty and then otherwise it's pretty steady, one or two appeals.
There was a group of them too, added the numbers up.
Everybody was home, nobody had anything.
And then the home occupation only being one.
Well, we used to have a bunch back when we had the type one and type twos, but the type ones were just pointless. So we got rid of them and, yeah, they're not. Nearly as common, and that was the hope, you know, to get rid of a kind of a. Unconfining permitting office that achieved nothing, but wasting time.
All right, anybody have anything else on that report? And the twenty twenty five joint planning commission and city council meeting times?
Yeah, we just, we wanted to talk about this. So at the December joint meeting, the last regularly scheduled meeting, not the one we had in February. A random one, almost scheduled. Uh, there was a discussion about moving the meeting date from four to six P M. So we wanted just to discuss that here. But then to help discuss it. The council needs to discuss some other meeting times, and so that would give them the opportunity to revise the public meeting resolution. And so it's just a good time to talk about the date or the time, I, I mean, and so what do you think? Should it be six instead of four?
I think six enables more people to get there with their jobs, but it was very tight. And then we got cut short because of the special session or executive session, whatever it was, so.
Past time, yes.
The same date as a council meeting? So these wouldn't conflict, but they're always.
They're, they're offset, yeah. The, the normal ones. That one was one that the mayor wanted to have. Just to get the police station going. And not to have to do, to wait till March. So the idea was, well, let's have the special meeting. Um, let's have it on the same day as a council meeting, um, so it's efficient as far as minutes and stuff. And yeah, unfortunately, they did have the executive session, but I think we accomplished what we needed to accomplish with the time that we had, so.
Any thoughts from anybody from working people?
Well, like I said, you know, I, I, I work out in the field, um, and so half the time my phone goes off and I'm. Out at Scotty's Bay looking at TV chargers or I'm, you know. Doing trench inspection somewhere. And so then I think, I, obviously I could set my timer for earlier and remember it was just sort of a. I always would feel terrible about missing them because I think they're so important. Um, that being said, this year I've written down all the dates and talked about flexing my time so I can leave early. Um, and so I also understand that staff doesn't always wanna stay late in the evenings and.
I mean, what time do you usually leave?
I leave work at five thirty, but I just work in Deer Island. I mean, but I can leave early. It's just a. I have to remember to do it. So I've set out my schedule already for the year. Would it be great if they were at six? Sure, but I also know that these guys have been here all day and so I'm sure that they. Want another day where they're working.
I have no issue with either time. I was just hoping after this, I would can revisit the six thirty time here. Because these guys are working later and uh, if it's, cause it was Jenny Carlson that had pushed for that. So I thought, you know, we might revisit that and maybe set it back.
You know, when I first started, the meeting didn't start till seven. So six thirty is. I think it's a nice compromise, but.
I mean. I think by either way, but I know it makes it easier for you.
I can always adjust if I have to, but.
Encourage everybody to attend the joint meetings. It's important. We were the ones that kind of pushed for it, I think, to have joint conversation and. We all need to make an effort to show up.
Yeah, and mine was just my own scheduling. You know, I need to schedule meetings in my calendar and give it a fifteen minute reminder notice, so and even the day before. So that's my own personal thing. I don't think making staff stay late for any other evening is. In my, but I'm just one person. There's a whole council and commission and everybody, so I guess I don't care either way.
There's a compromise there too. We went from four to six. I also want Reed to chime in, cause he's the one who likes six thirty.
Oh.
And, and the, 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 those are quarterly though, right? Okay, so I mean, that's, I can work around quarterly as opposed to.
So the commission is indifferent?
Retired, so it's not that I have flexible schedule anyway, I mean, whenever.
Like Trina had flexibility, right?
Yeah, confused.
She's unemployed currently, unemployed currently.
I think that there's people maybe who have time.
Verification for the class. I mean, council has to agree to it too.
So, uh, I guess we're, the, the, the planning commission, he's gonna stay at six thirty. Other time, yeah, not six o'clock, Ross. I told you, six thirty.
We're here, it's it.
So are we, are we discussing on what, when the joint?
What is your?
I can do any, it's I, whatever we can accommodate for everybody. I try to find a round time that works for everybody.
And it, uh, so I, I left um, before that conversation happened. I don't know, what was the?
I just remember. Chair Shoemaker brought it up and then the mayor chimed in and said that it was more transparent and citizens could attend as well. It was a really short conversation. I feel like only you two said something about it. And I said, well, I'll bring it up at the next meeting. That way everyone can chime in. Cause there were some people absent. And then we also have a staff shortage. Crystal is not our normal, um, and so that was part of the conversation, but aside from that, that was it.
That's a great point. I forgot about that, the, having the public be able to attend after they work. I think six is better than four for that reason.
Yeah, I mean, it just depends on what's the agenda, cause sometimes it's not, there's no visitor comment at the joint meetings. And so attendance isn't mandatory, cause they can just review the content. In fact, I don't remember the last joint meeting where we had visitor comments.
Well, we, we usually don't ask for comments, but usually we have uh, people. Watching.
Spirit of transparency, I think that it. I would say I agree with that, but then we're also, you know, online, on Zoom, on YouTube. Um, so I guess my opinion is I would lean more towards the four just because of staff. But.
The joint meetings, I wanna have to make sure that there's enough time for everything to get done and not be rushed and cut off by, say, an executive session like happened last time. It's the only way, way I would look at it that, I mean, and then staff time as well. So however. I mean, I'll, I'll work around anything.
Normally that's not gonna be a conflict. They're not gonna be on the state.
On the second week instead of the first or third. I mean, one other point, just because we're talking about all of it, is sometimes we bring consultants to those and. They also are being paid to come out here at six or whatever. I don't, it's just one other thought is. I, I would say at the last. Three out of the four we did last year, we had a consultant in attendance. One other consideration.
Better to have them during their regular working hours.
Well, I mean.
They could charge it anyway, doesn't matter.
Yeah. No, I just. I guess it could go either way.
So we're more worried about you guys a few, your hours, so.
We take it back to the council and say, see if anybody there has any strong feelings. I mean. I could go either way, except for I do like the fact that somebody that works can come attend after they work.
I think the main thing for us as staff is uh, that second week. Means we have planning commission and then the council joint meeting back to back. And, you know, staying two nights, I, I've done it for so long, it's just kind of the way it goes. I'm just happy I don't have to work weekends like some people, so.
We change that.
Right, we have no clear leader, so.
So yeah, it sounds like we're all over the place and there's, there's pros and cons for both and. You heard it to help the council discussion. Which may be as.
So we'll be ambivalent as you guys. We can do that.
And it's been four for how long?
It's been, we only started doing it um, last year, I think.
So the entire time is what you're saying. It's been at four o'clock.
I've just. For one year, four meetings.
Move to six, try it, and it seems to be a problem or something and you can always go back, so. I think, I think they're trying to sort of. You know, bring the times closer together and make everything, get everything done at that. In that evening. And there's something to be said about consistency.
Or, or any people coming from out of town to where traffic's an issue and, you know, four o'clock traffic versus the six o'clock traffic might be a. A struggle. That's the only thing I think of.
Consultants.
Consultants, they're getting paid, so they just shouldn't be in traffic.
Can we move on or?
I mean, I like four o'clock just cause we get done earlier, but I'm also in a position to where. My schedule is, I can vary it, so I'm not gonna stick or, you know. Try to push that, cause I can make six o'clock just as easy. And I'm in a position, I can make four o'clock. The goal, being considered the biggest factor would be just for the staff. So I'm taking four o'clock myself.
Train if everybody's at four o'clock, I can agree with that.
We're not, we're not, okay.
Bring it up.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, it, we have dialogue to help with the conversation.
All right, miscommunication regarding the Millard Road property.
Yeah, so this, this is quick, um, and so, you know, I've been doing this a long time and I've heard a lot of stuff in this room. It's like, yeah, I'm not sure that's accurate. And, you know, you just let things unfold. But we recently had that um, straight weaknesses opportunities and threats exercise with the council. And one of the things that was discussed then was new information and impacts to the city. So there were some comments at the um, January fifteenth meeting. You know, your comments, I didn't really think much of it. Um, but then I heard uh, an employee. Talk about someone in the community saying, hey, did you hear this? And I'm like, well, you know what? We should, it's probably good to correct it, especially with this group. Because as the planning commission, you may be asked, hey, what about this? And I guess I just want to make sure you have the right information. So. In January, there was testimony and, and a couple of these exhibits. And this pertains to the Millard Road property which the city owns. And if we look at it on the map. Um, the Millard Road property is here. This is Millard Road. It's kind of in the, between um, US thirty and then Ross Road here. And um, there was a couple of things mentioned of concern. And one, um, so this exhibit here was presented. And I'll put it here for you so you can see it. And the concern. Was, and this was based on a public records request for the Millard Road property. And I, I should point out that the, uh, within the city's urban growth boundary, the Millard Road. Um, there's about a mile, a linear mile of Millard Road and thirty or so properties. And so there's many properties within our urban growth boundary that can be considered the Millard Road property. And so in a public records request, you know, you may get a variety of different emails. And um, it appears that some communication um, that we've had with the developer. Uh, for, I don't know, five years or so off and on, um, was kind of mixed up in that. And that's what this plaque here uh, represents. Now, this is a concept. And the location of this one is here. So it's about a half a mile away from this property and it's on the south side of pro, of the property, not the north side. So if you looked at this closely and you looked at the bottom of the property, there's a building there. Well, the last I checked, there's no buildings in the middle of Millard Road. The Millard Road property is on the north side. This is on the south side. And if this was a complete picture, you would see that there is this kind of flag lot. Projection that goes to Millard Road. The reason I bring this up is, um, one of the concerns that was expressed. Is that we were recommending a mobile home park for the Millard Road property. And um, what I believe happened is an email was misconstrued. We were talking, um, it was a communication with um, a professional planner. And, you know, one of the questions they had was, um, one of the, the things that we talked about was flag lots. And it's a subdivision. It's not in city limits, it'd be in the county, but we comment on development that happens within our urban growth boundary. This lavender line is our urban growth boundary. Because eventually the city will grow into that. So we comment on that. And our comprehensive plan map. Includes designations within their urban growth boundary, be, because that helps determine what things are gonna be zoned upon annexation. And um, the designation here. Would normally be our R seven or R ten zoning district, which does not allow flag lots. And. In my response about the flag lots, you know, just one of the things I mentioned. Sometimes when you're talking with another professional planner, you're just brainstorming, helping them brainstorm options. And there is a large chunk, you can see a manufactured home park here. There's a large chunk. Adjacent to this property that has a mobile home residential designation. So that does allow mobile home parks. And I should note that about five years ago. The things they've talked about here have changed over the years. Uh, they talked about a manufactured mobile home park. They talked about larger lots, smaller lots. Um, it's been a variety of things as they explore the options. And the reason I mentioned um, the potential or consideration of designating this. Um, is simply because it's adjacent to that and that would enable um, a zoning. That would allow flag lots and it's that simple. And I wasn't saying, hey, you should develop as a manufactured home park. It's simply a designation. It's not a development recommendation. So that really had nothing to do with the city's Millard Road property. And I thought that was, cause that was one of the things that a fellow employee mentioned, hey, did you hear? The city was recommending a manufactured home park um, on the Millard Road property. So the other exhibit, another exhibit that was presented. So this is another um, flat example. So this is related to the city's Millard Road property. And um, it does show. Lots that are below five thousand square feet in size. And so. The, the concern on this one is that the city was approving a subdivision. With lots below the normal minimum five thousand square foot lot size, um, contrary to the um. Council's wishes. Now, the date of this plat predates the resolution. That the council adopted talking about that five thousand square feet. So the, the, the timeline's kind of off. And um, when we had the pre-application conference with the developer that the council chose for this property. Uh, cause I looked at, I looked at that plan and um, all these. Uh, cause I looked at, looked at that plan and um all these dimensions. The lot dimensions and the lot sizes were removed. And so it was just the skeleton of lots. And what I think happened is. There was, I think, three developers that had proposals to the council to choose. Um, the council chose that one, but they did express the desire that the lot sizes not be below five thousand square feet. And I think what happened is for the pre-application meeting that we had. Rather than just redesigning it, cause the pre-application meeting is to get initial feedback for the subdivision, just to help people along. They just removed those numbers. Um, and, and my comments, um, cause you, you will, we'll take notes and help. People remember and help us remember what we said. I noted that the pre-op plans were not to scale. Um, just please make sure all lots conform with the R five dimensional standards such as lot size with depth and such. This will be checked. We've received no subdivision applications. We've only had the pre-op meeting. And um, the property hasn't been sold. So us approving a smaller lot size, um, this is simply incorrect. And I just wanted to make sure that was clear in case um you heard uh rumors in the community.
Can I add something to that, Jacob?
Yeah, sure.
Just um for those who are.
Don't know, um, the, the pre-application meetings um. Happen all the time. The subdivisions don't always happen. Um, a lot of times the subdivision might move forward, but the lot size has changed, where the lot placements are changed. Um, so those initial talks, um, they're so commonly um. Not what we end up with that from, from my design standpoint, I won't even start designing anything until I get the final one. So I don't even ask for anything from Jacob or from the developer when I'm doing any designs because. What they start out with is one hundred percent not going to be what they end up with. And so I don't even look at them. Um, and so just to kind of. Back that up, I guess, is that happens all the time. There's stuff that's brought in. Just because the city has a copy of it, doesn't mean anybody.
Appreciate that clarification, cause I have heard that rumor around town.
I was confused. I mean, miscommunication sent home.
Before we move on to the planning director decisions, I don't see the proactive items on here. I'd like to just take a couple of minutes and see if we can.
That's my, that's my mistake. I did the agenda. It wasn't intentional. Yeah, not at all.
How do we include new rules? Remaining as we resolved a proactive planning commission. Does that mean that we consistently have thirty minutes on every meeting that we? Discuss the proactive items on the research you've done on your own. Um, I mean, the first step I think is really assigning people to. Who would like to do the research on. The items that we already have on our proactive list. Um, but I'm just looking for some feedback on how we might actually. Remain a proactive commission with our parameters that we've been.
I mean, the uh. There's backfinding. You can gather facts and you can, from my understanding. And uh, and you can do that, answer it with somebody else or number it. I think as long as there isn't any decision making. And I think you can use that umbrella as. A uh, we have.
I don't think that we can have two, two commission members doing something together outside of this.
You know, I think it, no quorums and no. I mean, I think that could really be misconstrued, construed into a subcommittee.
Yeah, because, yeah.
Be comfortable participating that way.
Me too.
Well, again, as I said, in fact, finding, that's what they define for us to have, have presentation. At the library, um. Uh, there's that aspect that, you know, it's such a crippling view that we're taking that. It's uh a detriment. Getting things done.
Do we have any insight into how other small communities handle this? I mean, I, I understand that like. Portland is big enough and staffed up, staffed up enough that. They can farm out some of this fact finding and whatnot to. Full-time staff attached to commissions, but surely other people in Oregon are running into this problem. I'm just wondering if anyone else has found a solution.
Good question.
Yeah, and I think it's a root problem because uh, like at that presentation, they talked about the rules being in place, but. Only recently they really looked at them closely and started providing this um. More careful advisory. Yeah, it, it is a good question. Um. You know, it's a question I can post on the planner, let's serve just to see what kind of answers we get.
Yeah, I, I'd be interested just to see if anyone else has thoughts or practices they're finding useful.
At the last joint meeting in December, I was re-listening to it to hear about the meeting time and um. City Administrator John Walsh talked about trainings they have, and I don't know if those are getting more. Detailed, cause that first one seemed like a big overview of ethics and public meetings law. Uh, but as they drill down, I mean, maybe there's more feedback. And then if there's someone here giving a training, you can ask follow-up questions and things like that. He said he would look into it. John, John's a very busy person. I don't know how far that's gone, but. I think he mentioned the LOC um doing training, so. That also might be an avenue to get more information.
Well, at least I think that let's all really consider it before the next meeting so that we can.
Yeah.
Come to the table with some ideas on how we accomplish it.
Sounds good.
I think setting.
I mean, while I agree, I think with your reading or your interpretation of it. My concern with that would be. Just even from a perception standpoint. Once you start gathering together. And it, you know, you're saying you're not making any decisions. The perception could still be out there and be brought up and. It makes it hard. So yeah, well, you came back in with a coordinated. Response, therefore you were discussing it and. You know, making decisions, blurring that line a little bit. So that would be my concern.
Yeah, and the omission of that, it's just because Christina's not here, so we're kinda.
Yeah.
No, no, I, that position's vacant.
I wasn't.
But it was uh. Plaza.
Architectural.
Special standards.
Still vacant storefronts.
That's right, vacant storefronts, yeah.
And I can, I'll put them back on so we can at least talk about it.
We also had a, you know, a, an agenda item discussion. I think you're adding in that it's just discussion or.
Yeah, yeah, that's what she's talking about, that she'll add it back on to the, the agenda. But for me, honestly, I feel like. Seems like. A work session within our meeting might be helpful. Whether that's fifteen minutes of meeting or half an hour of meeting, and then we just know that we're gonna work on it and we need to be prepared to. Do that. Otherwise. Don't see it happening.
And I think we were also excited about some of the things that we were planning and gonna accomplish. And then we were. You know.
Just cut out from hundreds.
It's a little dramatic, but yes.
The plaza one, I don't think is gonna be that difficult. Universal part of that would be the trees. But architectural standards and vacant storefronts.
Yeah.
So. Um, I mean, our goal is to go to the city council with recommendations. That's what we're fact finding and coming up with a. Some kind of strategy to take to city council, right?
Speaking of advisory.
Is, yeah, so.
There is a joint meeting coming up too on March twelfth.
That might be a good time to.
Yeah, I mean, it's just the next month.
Yeah, yeah. It depends on discuss it too. Let's. That's before the, before our meeting then or after our meeting?
One day after.
After our meeting.
March eleventh will be the planning commission and then March twelfth.
And so why don't we, our meeting, take a few minutes and decide what our strategy is to go to the city council with, and then we'll discuss it at the city council.
We get it on an agenda.
And the timing is good because uh. You know, our last year, two-year strategic plan, we're past that two-year mark. And so um. I don't know who's gonna do it because the people who did it before are here now. Um, but we are due for another two-year strategic plan. And so, you know, these kind of items help potentially uh inform that.
On the vacant storefronts, one of the topics, um, I know Main Street did a. And that to you guys at all?
They did, yeah. At the joint meeting they did.
Yeah, okay, that's right.
Yeah, and then it just fizzled.
Fizzled out from there. I think there was some enthusiasm there. It's gotta be a hard one, yeah.
It's, yeah, it's very broad and um. Yeah, it's broad.
And I think there was a lot going on at that time. We ran into a little bit of controversy too, I think. So revisiting it now might be a good, good time to do that.
Um, so planning director decisions previously emailed to us. Does anybody have any questions on those?
Great, just for your knowledge, these are um, you're CC'd on decisions that staff make. So all of our administrative decisions, if you have a question, you can bring it up at the next meeting or you can email. That's what this section's about. There's no action there.
Okay.
Yeah.
The big one is, it's not big by itself, but it's at sixteen forty-five Railroad Avenue. That's the Armstrong site. Which, which. Could be a new data center. That, that permitting is separate. Some of this is potentially connected to that. So that's one of our important industrial sites, so.
They open a data center with no power.
Well, power is one of the things that they need.
Fight a gamble. All right, planning department activity reports. We're doing December and January.
And I didn't refresh my memory on those, um.
Those are also just FYI, if you have questions, really. We don't really have presentations for them. If you wanted to read them, they're in the online packet.
Basically, uh, the code amendment stuff that we've been working on that most of you are tired of working on. Dodge that one.
Yeah, I was curious about that, that. Uh, when we were presented on changes we needed to make with single room occupancy and things.
Yeah.
Where it was presented to us, like it's mandated. You gotta figure out how to do this. It's not a yes or no. It's how are you gonna do it? And then it gets to the city council. The city council says no.
No, the city council, what the city council rejected.
Was manufactured homes?
Manufactured home related amendments, manufactured and prefabricated home amendments. And the. Amendments that would allow detached multifamily, the cottage cluster stuff. That was uh, and that, that one was not mandated by the state. That one was um in our. Two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen housing needs analysis, whatever date it was. And that's, you know, that's what the council has the ability to do. Um, but.
Could we have said the same thing though? Could we have, I mean, it. Resent it to me, I felt like I couldn't say no, that I didn't. Do it. I thought it was state law that we had. And they're still, they're saying, just choosing to say no.
The manufactured home prefabricated home is state law, yeah. So we'll, we will have outdated code in that case. And then the, the detached multi-dwelling, you know, we just. Just don't have that. And, and you know, I, I don't know if we'd have a, a lot of use of it anyways, so not the end of the world.
And there was nothing done with the SRO?
The uh SRO was capped.
Yeah. And so do I understand it correctly that. The historic district or the. Very few historic landmarks in the community. Those make it exempt, exempt on certain laws, like you wouldn't. You don't have to have a manufactured home next to a city landmark, right? Um, within the historic district.
Yeah, the, the hope is that that being in the code would uh reinforce those provisions of state law. Uh, without it in the code, there's a question is can we still implement that based on state law?
So it sounds like that tied to your hands a little bit.
Maybe. But, but it was at the, you know, it came up on the second reading. So the best thing to do is just, you know what? If that's an issue, we'll just delete all those amendments and maybe we'll deal with them later. Um, cause of all the effort put, we, you know, we had to salvage the effort. So, and, and the great majority of the amendments um survived, so.
So, as you said, it was capped for the SROs. Is that the cap is. Uh, not the same as what the state law states then? I understand.
Well, the state law says that uh. The local government shall allow single room occupancy. And, and there's a, a different threshold depending on where, whether it's a single or single family or duplex zoning. Or if multifamily is allowed. And you have the different rules based on that and it's based on. Law. There's not, the, the thresholds um are within that.
They didn't change from when you reviewed them, if that was your question.
Six, sorry, call there's six.
Yes, if it's, if it's, if it's a, if it's not a, a place that allows multifamily, it's up to six. Yeah, yeah, it, it didn't change. It just, it, it stayed and it was accepted by the.
I think it. Go ahead.
I was just saying that because we had people come in from the public hearing, you know, concerns about that. Saying that in Lake Oswego, they wouldn't be having that, just wouldn't be allowed. So, just. Maybe you wanna pull Lake Oswego and see what they were doing. I never did.
You know, I wish people understood how important public testimony is too. Cause when you have something presented for you and there's no testimony for or against. You'll notice you'll have some hearings that are just very emotional.
Yeah.
I wish we always had public testimony and help us through those decisions. So the only other comment I'd like to say is. Like to encourage everybody to really speak up. I always review the meetings when uh we're done and. It's hard to hear some of us. The sound system isn't great and we can all just remember to speak up so people can hear. That'd be great. And on that, I think we adjourn.
Thanks y'all. Good to see you, however remotely.